The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Workshop 1585 is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We will move to four point O discussion topics and we will begin with our compass goals for teaching and learning.
All right, so if we progress through the slide deck here, I think that we were going to give a little bit of background information.
Yeah, go ahead.
So going to the next slide, we have kind of the summary of the work that we do as a part of our compass. There we go. Dr. Lake, did you want to talk through that or do you want me to summarize it?
It's fine, I'll do it really quick. So back in when we started, when we did our strategic plan in 2019, we organized our work into these categories. Teaching and learning, human resources, business and finance and communication. And if you're not familiar, we organize our work into investigate, research and implement. So when we make changes or we look at things, we look at them over a period of time. And so these workshops were designed, when we put this in place five years ago, was to give updates to the community and to the board about our work and kind of where we are in that work. There are some things that may stay in investigate for a couple of years. Some things may be implemented over six or seven years. So that's kind of the premise of our compass. It is a living, breathing document. You'll see, if you go to the website, you'll see things crossed out, you'll see things added. You could see it one month, it might look like this, and then they may have some other things there. That's what we wanted. We didn't want our strategic plan to just be a stagnant document that's lived on the webpage and just sat there. So we wanted it to be live and so that's where we are with it and this is how we organize our work.
So for teaching and learning tonight, we have three areas of focus that we are going to discuss with regard to our compass. The first is our partnership between Lindbergh Schools and Special School District. There's a lot of work that is going on in terms of developing that partnership. So we'll review that. We're also going to review a program called Avid. As we continue to work on college career and workplace readiness, we are continuing to build programs and opportunities for students. So we'll hear from students tonight with regard to their experience in that program. And then finally, as you all know, we are a part of the Success Ready Students Network. And so we're going to update you on the work that has been happening internally as a district as we continue to align with the accountability systems at the state level and the continued growth of that program. So our first guest tonight, I'm going to bring up our special education coordinator, Dr. Joy Doyle, our executive director of assessment and student services, Dr. Jill Lawson, one of our teachers at the high school, Courtney O'Connor, math teacher, and then Matt Belding, one of our special education teachers, to talk about the partnership work that is happening between Lindbergh and Special School District.
Okay. Thank you so much for listening to us talk about some of the exciting things that are happening within the special education Lindbergh Schools partnership. Tonight, we're going to share some things that we're working on. Not only do they align with the compass work, but they also align with our program evaluation that we shared with you, I think, over the summer. So we have broken them into three categories for tonight. Student supports, family supports and staff supports. So we'll go ahead and start out with the student support and share some of the work that we are doing. Thank you. So on here, I just tried to capture, just by images, some of the things that we're working on with our staff and within our board advisory committees. The image on the top left is just a visual to show you some of the things that Dr. Doyle and I have done along with the special education coordinators and the teachers to really put the growth of students and the growth towards their IEP goals, you know, bringing it to life so that it's easy to understand, not only for the students, for the staff, but particularly for the families. So we have provided some training to our special education teachers to utilize some of our tools, to access some tools that they probably have been utilizing for a long time, but to bring those to life during an IEP meeting so that we can have more visuals for our students' growth from where they started, where the baseline was when they started to receive some of the services or when they started down the path of a new goal to where they are, what that trajectory is towards meeting their particular goal. So although this is not a duplicate of what you may see in an IEP, it really does kind of bring that to life, looking at where a student started, where they are going. Are they on the right trajectory? And if not, what is some of the course correction that needs to happen in place? Or if they are exceeding that trajectory, how can we set new goals and have even higher expectations for students? So it was an opportunity for teachers to share, like, I have this stuff available. How can I bring it to life during the IEP meetings to share with families? Over to the right where it says monitoring student and program effectiveness and growth, this is just an image of how we are using our assessment management system, our dashboards, if you will, to show how programs are impacting student learning and growth. So here's an example of a student that is being assessed using the FastBridge tool. However, these are students who are tagged into a specific program. And for an example, a Wilson program, a Wilson reading program, and monitoring the impact of the student over time, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So these are just some of the things that we're really working on with our students. We have a lot of great programs that are being introduced. We are seeing some of the impact. So this just gives an opportunity for us to show students, like, you are making the gains, to show teachers you are having the impact and to show parents that all of this is working towards everybody getting their goals. Down at the bottom, we have just an image of the word transition. And this really aligns to some of the work that is in the beginning stages of our student life board advisory. This is for all students in our district, but we're reflecting on our transition programs. And I don't want to send the, when I say transition, I'm talking about early childhood to kindergarten, fifth grade to sixth grade, eighth grade to ninth grade and 12th grade to post-secondary. And I don't want it to seem like we don't have great transition opportunities for students and families, but it's a great way for us just to connect as a committee and say, hey, where can we improve? What are we doing really well? Where can we give some shout-outs? But where can we provide some new experiences for students? And so within that transition work, when we're talking about all students, we will break into particular student groups such as how do our transitions work for multilingual learners, for our gifted learners, for our students who receive special education services. And so these are just three examples of some of the work that we're doing thus far.
So I'm going to focus on the area of family support and really highlight a few of the things as we continue to really grow our LPAT group. That's our Lindbergh Parent Advisory Council. This year, we have eight active participants who really give voice to what parents of students who receive services might feel that they need or what they would really like to help support them as a family. Some examples to note this year, again, we started the year with our Back to School Bash. We had over 100 participants at Watson Trails Park. We, in September, did a virtual presentation promoting equity in special education, having the executive director of DEI from Special School District kind of give that balcony view of what SSD has to offer in terms of staff and family development and where it comes down to equity and how we can foster equity in the provision of services throughout our districts. And then we had Dr. Mason from Lindbergh Schools, who talked about how within Lindbergh, how we're really incorporating Special School District staff in committees so that that voice can really be heard. Moving into January, again, we're listening to the parents and kind of a request to have some learning on strategies for making and keeping friends. This would be addressing students from K to 12 of all abilities, having a guest speaker come in person for that. And then we're planning for a spring Family and Community Special Education Resource Fair. I just sent out an email yesterday, a survey to parents, again, to get their input on what they would be interested in coming to attend. Another example is the monthly newsletter that I put out. Again, this is an opportunity to highlight for our staff and for our families, these events that we're doing within SSD Lindbergh, but also countywide and what some of those resources are that parents have access to, as well as to allow parents to be able to directly connect with Special School District leadership. And now on the next slide, we'll be talking about staff. And we've brought Courtney O'Connor and Matt Belding with us tonight so that they can really talk about how we're taking a little different approach this year to the partnership agreement, how we're customizing it to work with our staff, to look at what that agreement really means for SSD and Lindbergh staff and students here in Lindbergh Schools.
So I'm Courtney O'Connor. I teach math at the high school and I'm one of our teacher union leadership committee members. And Matt is on the Special School District side of their teacher union. So we met together with the school district leadership in about March or April of last year to really talk about what are ways that we can improve the partnership between Lindbergh SSD and then the SSD general ed side. We had a lot of different meetings and had a lot of great conversations. And we added a question to the survey that we send out to staff, or I don't send out to staff, but that the school district sends out to staff, about just how the working relationship is between the different groups and how does the staff feel like they can improve? And we sat down as a committee and looked at that data and really dove into that and really decided that we need to work together as both groups to figure out the best way to make this two systems work really well together. And we formed this larger committee, which is on the next slide. There we go. And we have representatives from all buildings, from all grade levels. We have special ed and we have general ed. We have administrators, we have central office staff. We have a lot of people in this group. And we met for our very first time about a month ago for a half day. And we dove into the official partnership agreement, which most of us didn't even know existed. So that was really great. And we went through and we talked about how do we think specific areas are working for us? We couldn't talk through the whole thing in that half day, but a lot of good information came out of that.
And I'll talk about that. Some of the things that came up were just the clear lines of communication between both partners. There was really, it's not really a need, but a want between all of the both sides, SSD and Lindbergh, to kind of bridge this gap that we kind of feel that we have. It's different in every school, so we know we have to address it individually. A lot of it has to do with culture and communication, so that's kind of where we're focusing. And our hopes and goals for the remainder of this year and as we go on through is just to be able to bridge that gap and understand what we do between our districts and how we work together for the kids. And just being able to answer questions that gen ed teachers have about the things that we do and why we do and the resources we have and how we can help support Lindbergh and how Lindbergh can help support us and just making these kids more, what am I looking for? Successful, thank you.
Any questions?
I do have a question. When we were here, I think it was last year about this time, where one of the problems was finding substitutes for when a special education teacher was out. That was a real problem. Has that improved at all over the last year?
So I would say absolutely. And so I'm talking from kind of that balcony view. I know it looks different by level and by building, but as I look at my sub fill rate each day, I would say certainly for the first six weeks of school, we were at probably a 90% or better fill rate, whether it was a paraprofessional position or a teacher level position. I don't know if you can speak for what it's looked like at the high school specifically?
We haven't had an issue this whole year, so I think that issue has gone, I hope. But those are one of the things that we'd like to address together because we work in the same building. We work in rooms next to each other. I work in four rooms with gen ed teachers. So how can we support them? How can they support us if those problems come? Because it's our kids together that are going to suffer, so we got to help support everybody.
Can I just go off script for a second and talk about the advocacy that's happened with the new leadership from Special School District? And when I say new leadership, I'm talking about we have some new special education coordinators, but we just received 15, like, positions for paraprofessionals. And it was just a lot of great work, a lot of great advocacy, relentless, if you will. So I just really want to put that plug in for how that is just an amazing thing to celebrate as well.
Do you, this committee, you're planning for it to meet all school year?
There's two meetings for this school year.
Okay. And is this something that will continue kind of indefinitely?
I think so. I mean, right now, we're just taking it one step at a time, making sure we're not wasting anyone's time. We are pulling teachers out of the classroom and administrators out of the building, but based on the very first meeting, I would say absolutely.
Great. And then, so for the regular business meeting tonight, I know that we're voting on the partnership agreement. So changes haven't really been made to this one. This is kind of the boilerplate one from SSD, but like going forward, maybe next year, we might see some customized changes.
Well, I think if there's any, I'm so sorry, I'm just cutting you off. Okay, so if there are any customized changes, I think it would take the whole county to provide input. I sat on the one iteration of it. It was probably five years ago. It wasn't this last one, it was the one before. And there were parents from all counties and administrators from all counties as part of that. So I think it would take all of that coming together.
And I think when I use the word customize, I'm talking about how we're sharing this, communicating it, and then building by building, looking at what does this partnership component look like in your building? And where are we going to forge maybe some new ways that it can look for our building? So not necessarily changing the content of the agreement, but really identifying how it's operationalized. So we're kind of looking at our strengths and our weaknesses within it. Like, we're doing these ones really well. This is an area we could work on.
The answer to that is yes, but I also think when you look at, when you guys dig into the partnership agreement, I think some of the things are kind of vague. Like, one of the things that came up in our committee is what does this even mean? Some of the terms, things that are there. So I think what we're trying to do is break it down. What does it mean in Lindbergh? Because that's the best that we can do with the information. So when we're talking about customizing it, it's like, what does this mean in Lindbergh? And then buildings can look at and say, these are things that I'm doing really well and these are things I can work on within my building so that they're personalizing where their goals need to be and what they need to work on.
Great, thank you for explaining that a little more.
Thanks, all of you for being here. I really appreciate all of your information. I had two questions. On the staff support, when it says that there's four representatives, I just want to clarify, is that per building in our district? Okay, great, thanks. And then I liked the term bridge the gap. And I was wondering if you could just like speak a tiny bit more about like what that looks like? And I was, when I heard it, it was, I was thinking of it as the partnership between Lindbergh and SSD and bridging the gap between them, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding exactly what you mean.
Every building is different. So when I got into this position, I've had the opportunity to visit all these buildings and talk to all these different people. And I will tell you, everyone has their own challenges and their own great things that are happening. So we would like to address those individually because we as this group can't do that as a whole. So bridging those individual gaps inside the buildings to make that relationship stronger. I know I've worked in Lindbergh District for Special School District. I think this is my 15th year and every year is different. And we have different challenges based on the students and who comes and who goes. So it's definitely a work in progress. It's a live document, if you will, like, it's always changing. So just bridging those little things that will make our lives easier as teachers and then hopes and success for those students.
Thanks so much.
Good term.
I will, I will say this is a timely meeting for me. I actually came from an IEP meeting just before this at two o'clock today. And as a parent in that process, it really does feel like you're working with a team, having the homeroom teacher and the administrator and also SSD resource and we have an OT professional in there as well. So just working to come up with solutions and hear their different impressions of my student. So thank you from a parent to all that you do for the students in our district.
I think one example, just real quick, is that to bridge the gap, that we're trying to make this better, is we've created and we're piloting an IEP writer program within the high school. So the teachers, the case managers get to case manage and not worry about writing all the paperwork and all the things that go along with that. So we're hoping it is successful. We're hoping that it gets countywide, that's the main goal, but just district-wide for us so we can see what that looks like in all of our buildings with the hopes of these teachers being able to focus more on the students and making sure our paperwork is compliant and all those Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted for the parents. So, and that person is really the expert and helps lead us in these conversations to make sure your guys' needs are met and all the students, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I'm just another thank you for your work. It is super exciting to see us all talking, bridging the gap and communicating together. And I was looking for some goals, but listen, you guys are still just beginning. So I totally get that, so I love it. But I just want to say thank you for all partnering and communicating together. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. All right, so it is my pleasure to welcome Elma Hoje to the table. Thank you for bringing extra chairs because I know she has a group of students who are joining her and we'll be able to introduce them to talk about the Avid program. A really exciting development that is, has begun officially this school year.
Are you guys okay if I stand? Okay, I stand all day, so I'm used to it. So Elma Hoje, she's one of the Avid teachers. I have a counterpart, Tim DePasky. He was not able to be here because he has night class. And if you guys want to move next on the slide deck, we'll go over the acronym so you guys know. Can you hear me now? Okay. So like it says on there, you guys know Lindbergh loves acronyms, so we just added another one. And Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. So basically, the whole goal of the course is to give students the skills to be ready for post-secondary, so whether that be college or the workforce. And if you guys can see on the sticky note there, those are kind of some of the skills that we are working on. In a second here, the students will go over some of the skills we've begun to develop. So we work a lot on organization and time management, kind of study skills and strategies. So they're learning, we haven't gotten there yet, but we'll kind of go over some stuff for standardized testing, note-taking, which is really important. We just finished a little career research project. So they kind of get to explore colleges and careers. We're actually getting ready to go on our first colleges in a couple of weeks. We are also working on our writing skills and of course, communication and collaboration. So they actually just started a group project today and they'll kind of tell you a little bit about it. So enough for me because I know you guys want to hear from them, so I'm going to let them take it away. See you guys.
Hi, I'm Jackie and I'm going over organization and time management skills. So what I'm going over is something we do at the beginning of each class. We do five minutes of ABCD time. And ABCD is another acronym we use, which is Agenda, Binder, Communication and Don't Know. Agenda stands for, like, we check our binder and update it with the assignments we have completed as well as assignments we need to add to our to-do list. For binder, we check and make sure that we have our binder in order so that we can pass our binder checks. For communication, we take that time to communicate with teachers through an email for like assignments we need work on or if we need help in that class. And for don't know, we would ask the teachers, like Ms. Hoje or Mr. DePasky, about a certain subject. And my personal experience with ABCD time is that it's helped make my life more organized and it's as easy as just flipping to a certain tab in the binder to find my current assignments.
Hi, my name is Malika and I'm going to be talking about notes that we've been taught. So a few weeks ago, we've been taught how to take three different types of notes. Cornell notes, three-column and two-column notes. For me personally, I like Cornell notes because when writing Cornell notes, you're able to ask any question that you want and you're able to write a question various types of ways. And that helps me a lot because usually during testings for any class, when you're trying to find out what the answer is to a question, you also have to find out what the question is asking you specifically. So I like that we've been taught Cornell notes mostly because it helped me when taking testings and it has sent me for successful.
My name is Emma Weiss and before we presented our career research project, we did a lesson over our presentation skills. So whenever you present, you need to speak at a good pace and not too loud or too quiet. You also need to talk not too fast or too slow. And when you're presenting, you need to have good body language, like not leaning on desks or fidgeting with your hands, not crossing your arms. And things to avoid with eye contact is over utilizing your notes and staring someone down. It's helped me because I've done better in presenting in front of my classes and things like that. I don't know if you noticed, but we all were like, oh, am I?
We were taking your instructions.
Thanks for all the guidance.
Yeah, I was like this.
You listed everything I was doing.
I'm Izzy and we worked on citations within our career research projects, project. And I didn't, I thought that I knew how to do a correct works cited page, but I did not. And we learned how to do correct double spacing and having a hanging indent and then like alphabetizing them and the correct format of like the name, the teacher's name, the type of class and the date and like using certain sites to like cite our websites and like photos. And this prepared me definitely for English. It has helped me a lot, like citing my work and stuff. And then I'm going to like already know what to do in English class and other classes on how to cite my photos correctly and I feel a lot more comfortable on how to do this.
Hi, my name is Riza and I'm an Avid student. And what I'm going to be talking about is tutorials or TRF, basically another acronym. It stands for Tutorial Request Form. And basically, what I believe to be is the best thing about Avid because it's basically like a group project and like a problem-solving skill with groups. And basically, what it is, is basically like if you have a point of confusion in a class, you get to, you get in a group with the same class, like people are confused on, and basically you give a 60-second speech and talk about your point of confusion. And basically, what I like most about is basically you, like, it's a group activity and I like being with groups because I feel much better and not just by myself. I feel like more ideas pop into my head. And basically, and it's a group problem-solving skill and basically, and it helped me a lot because I take an honors class, which is pretty difficult for me. And in my group project that we, like, the group I was in, they were able to help me, like, they asked me some questions, like some background info. They used their prior knowledge and basically it helped me overcome the point of confusion and it helped me be much more active in that class and use my resources and ask questions to Ms. Hoje or Mr. DePasky or my classmates. And overall, I think this is probably the best part of Avid because it's, like I said, I love being in a group. I feel like it's more open, more ideas. And I think problem solving, it's a skill that you need in life. And I think it's just very helpful in Avid because in Avid, you need problem-solving skills, communication skills and overall group activities. And because I think it's a great way of bringing people together. And overall, I love Avid. I love the tutorial, AKA TRF, another acronym, which I said, Tutorial Request Form. And thank you. It's an honor to be here and to present in front of y'all. Thank you.
So just kind of looking forward, we just started their community service project. So we talked a lot about why we serve others. So we talked a lot about why we serve others and kind of the benefits of that, kind of through the lens of like, it's great to help others, but it also looks good on college and scholarship applications, helps you build connections, that kind of thing. And then like I said, we have our first college visit in two weeks. We're going to go to St. Louis Community College at Merrimack. And then we'll have another college visit second semester. I believe we're going to go to Uppsle, but we haven't 100% decided. Do you guys have any questions for us or the students?
I'm curious, during your Avid class during the school day, are you able to work on assignments from other classes?
Do you guys want to speak to that or do you even want to talk to the rest? If you guys want to hear from me, I figured you guys wanted to hear from them, so.
Yes, actually, we take a few minutes at the end of each class. We have like a studying time, work on homework for either that class or any other class we're struggling in.
Great, thank you so much.
One more thing. Sorry. We also have dedicated times on the block day and we have the hybrid block at the schedule. The last like 40 minutes of every block day, they have that learning lab time so they can work on something in there. We give them the option to go to the math tutor or the writing centers, they have that available to them. And then they also have me to teach English and then Mr. DePasky teaches history so we can help them out with that. Math and science, they can use each other.
Thank you. This question's for any, any student who wants to answer it. Why, why did you want to be in the Avid class? What was your goal for it, for taking this?
My goal was because when I was, when I, when they told me that Avid helps you to take different types of notes, help you succeed in your classes, but also help to show you what you could do for your future. And one of the reasons I took it is that I liked that we could do college visits. And one of my goals is to go to college and I like that in Avid, we are taught a bunch of things about what classes are given or like what happens after you finish high school. That's about it.
I'm going to piggyback off of that question because when I look at you, sorry, I see like five very wise, very confident individuals. And so now that you're in this program, what would you say to a student that maybe wasn't sure if it was the right fit for them? And anyone can answer. So if a student's like, I don't know if Avid is right for me, like what would you say to them?
I mean, what I would say is it doesn't matter if you're like, if you're not that motivated for Avid, but what matters is you're confident. That's all you need, confidence. You don't need like any specific skills because when you get into Avid, like before I wasn't in Avid, I wasn't organized. When I got into Avid, when I had that confidence, I got more organized, I got more motivated to work on my assignments with people, with my friends, with teachers. Like for an assignment, I'm in World History Honors, I had to write a DBQ literally. I'm so lucky. Ms. Hojic is an ELA teacher and Mr. DePasky, he's a World History teacher. So I had both of them check it and I got an overall good grade on my DBQ. So, I mean, I'm lucky, so I'm very happy about that. Just be confident, that's all you need, confidence.
I would like to actually add on to that. I also would say like if you have a hard time breaking out of your shell and you want to meet new people, this is a great class to take because Avid is like one big family and we get to spend a lot of time together and get to know each other.
Thanks.
And it's just, just a quick comment. So, big, I love this program. I've been familiar with it for a long, long time. My son-in-law is an Avid graduate and now is very successful. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are off and running. And just so the, the group knows or the community knows, these group, this group of kids will stay together all four years. And so they build on that. And when referring to a team, it is, they become that support system. So, you know, and our goal is that they'll take the most challenging academic schedule that you guys can because you know that you have the supports and exploring those things. So I'm glad it's going well and I love the shirts.
Thanks.
Your superintendent might want one.
We'll have to ask Jason Wolfert if he can put it up.
All right, thanks guys, that's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
You know, it's really hard to follow a group of students. And I have to tell you that I'm sandwiched tonight between, when I talk about the Success Ready Students Network, I'm sandwiched between students. Students talking about Avid, students sharing a project that, and a learning experience that they had in school. And so it's, it's actually a really good fit to talk about this Success Ready Students Network right here because we're seeing what successful students who are ready for college career and the workplace, what it really looks like. So I'm just going to give you a quick summary of where we are in our Success Ready Students Network. As you already know, but I, I think I need to reiterate whenever I can, the State Board of Education did approve the waiver request from the 20 school districts who are part of this work, looking to redesign the assessment system and accountability system within the state of Missouri. What I have for you on the slide deck right now is kind of a summary of all of the work that is happening. I'm not going to touch on each of these pieces. I really just want to emphasize that we are continuing to work on the assessment development side of it, working on the psychometrics, working on developing the public-facing dashboard of what student success looks like in Lindbergh. So that, in fact, today, Dr. Lawson and I were in Jefferson City all day, working with the statewide coalition to do this work. So it's continually a work in progress. But behind the scenes, there's also a lot of mindsets that we need to work on to determine that we are ready to really send our students out into a world where they can be successful. So I want to go through these mindsets that are really the foundation of this work and share with you the feedback that we've gotten about where we are within Lindbergh. So Spencer, if you go to the next slide. So this is the first of eight mindsets. Students are empowered daily to make important decisions about their learning experiences, how they will create and apply their knowledge and how they'll demonstrate their learning. And what I want to draw your attention to are the three bullet points underneath of that. We did an exercise with our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, which as you know is comprised of primarily parents, we have a strong student voice in that as well. And we asked them with each of these eight competencies, what are we doing well? We also asked them, what are our opportunities? And I'll, spoiler alert, our opportunities is, are basically, we need to get more consistent. All of these things I'm going to share with you, we have pockets of excellence, we have pockets of strength, but how do we make sure that's a universal access for all of our students? Whether that's by grade span or by course load, whatever that might look like. So as I go through these tonight, keep in mind, in the back of your mind, that we are still continuing to develop these things to make them systematic throughout the district. So when we look at empowering our students, we start off with proficiency skills. Students understand what they need to do and they're setting goals with regard to that. Power Lunch, there's a lot of students who are empowered by the choices they get to make with how they use their time at the high school with Power Lunch. And then student choice activities and learning, that is a common thread that happens throughout our classrooms. So again, these are not teaching and learning examples. These are parent, student, and I forgot to mention, we also had our administrative team give feedback. So what I'm sharing with you here are the consensus items from both of those groups coming together. If you go to the next slide, assessment is meaningful. It's positive and empowers learning experiences and we can use it in a way that impacts learning because it's timely and it's relevant. And, and we are very familiar with the assessments that we have district-wide, whether that's NWEA, I-Ready, FastBridge for our reading assessments. We also closely tie our classroom assessments back to priority standards so that they have meaning and value and students see what their learning is in relationship to our expectations. And then finally, retake opportunities, wanting students to have the opportunity to continue to learn and grow. It's not a one-and-done experience in being able to demonstrate what they know. Next slide. Students receive timely differentiated support. So we have a lot of structures in place to help with that throughout the district. We have flex time at the middle schools where students are able to coordinate with their teachers for extra support. We have win time, what I need time, that is a, a level of intervention for our students. I didn't put on here academic networking, but academic networking at the high school serves in the same, in the same vein. Small group instruction for, based on where students are and a personalized learning experience. And then throughout all of this, it's multi-tiered systems of support. We talk about tier one is what all kids get and then based on additional needs, we support with interventions or enrichment to make sure we're continuing to meet kids where they are. Next slide. Students progress based on mastery, not seat time. So this is, this is probably the, the biggest challenge in how to structure this, but there are definitely things that happen naturally within our system. And when I say naturally, it takes a lot of embedded effort. Like it, it's not something that just happens by happenstance, but it happens within a traditional classroom setting as opposed to reformulating the entire structure of school. So using proficiency scales helps us to support students and progress them based on what their assessment is telling us. We have acceleration processes, enrichment opportunities. So continuing to, to keep kids learning at a pace that is appropriate for where they are. The next slide is focused on those different pathways and varied pacing. So there's two ways you can look at this, right? The student choice that happens in the classroom with must-do and may-do opportunities with student choice, as you'll, you'll hear in the next presentation, opportunities that students have to choose what they're going to research, what they're going to learn about, what they're going to develop. But there's also programming. Avid is a perfect example of, of programming that exists where we're able to vary the pacing, vary the pathways for students. Everything that falls under the Diploma Plus umbrella is an example of that as we, as our students have access to a slew of different course selections that are tied to college and career readiness. So you get what's happening in the classroom and then you get also the programmatic opportunities for students. If you go to the next one, strategies to ensure equity for all students. So we want to make sure that our systems are set up so that all of our students can access what they need in order to be successful. So it starts with universal expectations. Are we all on the same page with the expectations that we have for students? That includes a high level of rigor, it includes behavioral expectations. We have to start by speaking the same language and then make sure that our students have a strong voice in what happens for their own learning. We diversify resources so that students can see themselves and others reflected in what they're learning. So really intentional opportunities there. Next slide. Rigor and common expectations for learning. So I think again, our, our Avid students really highlighted the concept of rigor. When we raise expectations for students, they generally meet those expectations. So we have to keep high expectations as a part of our system. That happens with our success skills, it happens through our learning management system, it happens through our priority standards and our proficiency scales. And then standards-based learning is ultimately keeping our eye on the ball to make sure that students can meet those expectations that we have for them. The next slide. Engaging in real-world learning. So continuing to, again, develop programs, whether those are internships, career technical programs, whether that's starting with design lab in the elementary and then moving into computer science, engineering, technology courses. ICAP, our students starting in eighth grade, develop their own individual career and academic planning. And we're continuing to work through and make that even more robust. So again, these are not things that we set as Teaching and Learning Department, these are things that our advisory set, our administrator set, where there was consensus that we are, we have these competencies happening within Lindbergh schools. But there continue to be opportunities for us. So when we go to the next slide, just some things that we're continuing to do. First of all, we did expand our NWEA MAP growth this year as we're making the transition to use NWEA as our accountability system. Third grade, we did not previously have NWEA MAP growth in third grade, so we added, added it in third grade. And then we also extended it through algebra courses. So if a student takes algebra in eighth grade, that would be their final experience with NWEA MAP growth. If they're a student who takes algebra 1A and 1B in high school, then after 1B, they would finish that, that sequence of assessments. So continuing to use that data to impact learning, continuing our work with Diploma Plus initiatives and providing opportunities for students to have what are called market value assets through the Success Ready Students Network. And that's really just saying, these are assets that are going to help further our students, propel them in life beyond the traditional high school experience. We're continuing to expand the use of proficiency scales. So they are in sixth grade now and being written in seventh and eighth grade and continuing to be developed. And then I have the opportunity to share with you a task force that we are, just kicked off last month, that we're really excited about, that is an opportunity for us to develop, to develop even more programming. So if you go to the next slide, Spencer. We have a task force that is looking at two different things. There actually, it's actually two separate goals on our compass. One is to investigate embedded credits. And when you think about embedded credits, that is essentially like a class that can count for one or more than one subject. So you've probably heard of courses like geometry and construction. That would be an embedded class, or an embedded credit type of class where you're getting math credit as well as CT, a career technical education credit. We saw, we've seen other examples. We saw a video of one that was agriculture and government and it went through the entire regulatory process that happens in a farm-to-table environment. So a lot of different opportunities to merge content and kind of break down the silos that traditionally happen in, in schools. We've even had conversations about things like marching band and PE. Is there an opportunity, these kids are doing a lot of physical work, is there an opportunity to think differently? None of these things have answers yet, this is an investigation. So that's one part of the investigation. The other is about career academies and how to consider and help our students have more career access at younger ages. We've seen some things, I know that many of you were at MSBA last year along with me where we've seen some models of that that are really exciting. And so we're investigating that. This task force is comprised very heavily of teachers because we want teachers to get excited about these opportunities and engaged and wanted to develop these programs. But we also have parents, students, a couple of you are on, on the task force as well. We started meeting earlier this month and we continue meeting at the beginning of each month to learn from one another. We currently have a group from the task force who's at the Aurora Institute, which is a symposium that is very specifically about competency-based learning and the opportunities to give kids more real-world experiences, break down those silos, as I said, and, and really have more control over their learning. We're going to continue this work with some site visits to schools in the Chicago area, work with an organization called Institute for Personalized Learning to see some programs in Wisconsin and then also some in the Kansas City region as well. So we're going to be doing a lot of learning. And then ultimately, our goal is to create a recommendation that we can start implementing programming as early as 25, 26 school year. So some really exciting things we look forward to continuing to share with you as the, as the work progresses. Any questions?
Just a quick clarification on the timeline. The, the waiver that we got, in simple language, one of the big moves there is, is no more MAP test, right? We're moving into the NWEA as our standard for showing our growth and showing our improvement. When does that go into effect? Is that for the 2024, 25 school year?
We are using NWEA MAP growth as our accountability tool for this school year. However, we don't yet have a federal waiver. There's actually a lot of conversations at the federal level and we are not the only state who's in this situation. Montana recently got a federal, requested and received a federal waiver, so it's sparking a lot of conversations with the US Department of Education. So we anticipate, and I, I feel like I should always couch this, we don't know everything yet, so, but this is what we're anticipating, is that we will still need to give the MAP test to meet federal accountability this school year, but that next year, that federal waiver will be in place and only our NWEA MAP growth assessments will be given to students. So while the accountability tool this year for us is NWEA, we do still have to give the MAP test.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. Well, then I gave you a little preview of what we have to come because it's super exciting. I'm going to invite our, our next folks up to join us. I'm, I'm speaking for Dr. McKenney since he's, he's at state competition right now. We have Hillary Schweitzer, one of our English teachers, and I'm, I'm, I'm not going to give away too much, I'm going to let her, her speak to this. Cole Bailey and Joey Haberberger, who are going to share with you some work that they've done in class. And then of course, Anne Wurden, who oversees our benefits program. So Hillary.
Hi, I'm Hillary Schweitzer. I teach English III PBL at the high school. PBL stands for Project-Based Learning. It is a counterpart to the typical junior-level English course. So in addition to kind of the run-of-the-mill English skills that are focused on like research, writing standards, reading standards, we really focus on some of the Lindbergh success skills. So communication and collaboration are big in PBL. And that kind of is what brings us here today. Cole and Joey did a capstone project last year where they were tasked with finding a local issue and they were to present a well-researched solution that keeps the community in mind. And so they are going to talk to you today about their presented solution to the issue of a lack of knowledge of life insurance and specifically catered to the Lindbergh staff.
Hello, uh, nice. Sorry, that took me a second to figure out the clicker. Um, so our presented problem originally was that we wanted to educate families specifically in St. Louis and the community about life insurance in case that they didn't know about it, they weren't educated or it just wasn't important enough to them. But after actually presenting to Dr. Lake and actually a few of the other people here, we decided that we wanted to maybe turn that more into Lindbergh community, staff and families and how we would be able to educate you guys and the and families, and how we would be able to educate you guys and the staff of Lindbergh on life insurance and its importance.
So the process for for, I don't know if I should potentially move that. There we go. The process for making this happen was fairly lengthy and complex. But one of the things we really focused on was trying to work with actual industry experts. And we were very lucky. Joey's dad gave us some ties. He works in the life insurance industry. But we spoke with several experts and we presented some of these quotes that you see up here in our original presentation. And they really just synthesize kind of for us what life insurance should look like for families. And also, we spoke with John Peters, who is an insurance training specialist at Edward Jones. And he kind of explained that he feels like it would be useful if there was some kind of way to get information to people and particularly families so that they can make the right decision for themselves. But he didn't really know necessarily what that should look like, how it should work. And so we kind of built off of that, that idea as our groundwork. Another key part of this was research and statistics. You can see some of these key ones up here are ones that really resonated with us. And this first one you see toward the top center was one of the ones that really hit home for us, that fifty nine percent of Americans are just a single paycheck away from homelessness, which is truly an incredible majority of people. And that really resonated with us. And that ties very closely to this one that you see off to the left here, that forty four percent of families specifically would encounter extreme financial hardship within that first year of the passing of a wage earner in their household. So that demonstrates that particularly for families in the United States, it really is a matter of financial stability following an already tragic event. And you see that reflected in people who have purchased a life insurance policy, that they feel a lot more secure in the stability and the well being of their family's finances, with seventy eight percent of people reporting that increased sense of security. And we also noticed that there are some pretty intense generational gaps here, as you can see off to the right. Older generations like Gen X and baby boomers are much more likely to have life insurance, even though it doesn't necessarily pose as much use to them. They're less likely to have dependents. And then Gen Z and millennials particularly, who are starting to have kids, are having lower enrollment numbers, even though it again poses more use to them. And that's something that's really key for the Lindbergh School District specifically because the staff here is predominantly in those younger generations. It's a relatively young staff. And so being able to get that information to these younger generations is another key focus.
So before we get into this next part, after talking, conferencing, kind of about how to really show you guys the impact and hit home with, you know, life insurance and its importance, I wanted to put in, and we all collectively decided, a true event that, you know, Haberberger, my own story, that you guys might be able to kind of understand a little more. So the story starts with, on the top left there, we have Henry and Ruth. They own a confectionery, owned a confectionery down in the city. They called it Schmidt's Little Confectionery. That's their last name, Schmidt. And they have three kids and the only one that you're going to need to know for this story is Jean, the eldest daughter. And then on the right down the street, we have John and Anna. They get all of their income for their household off of John playing the organ for his local church. And just so you know, they had nine kids, nine kids, and all of their income came off that. So my grandpa has a lot of horror stories about that, sharing rooms. So fast forward a little bit, we have Jean. Jean comes home one day after just graduating nursing school to find her father on the floor dead from a massive heart attack. She attempted to resuscitate him but was unsuccessful in her attempts and her father died in her arms in her house. Bob and Jean, Bob is the eldest of John and Anna. They meet, get married, fall in love, and they have three kids. Mark, Kevin, who's the favorite, he's just the best. I don't know, it's something about him, he's just amazing. And then Karen. And they decide, you know, oh, sorry. John, at the age of seventy five, also died of a heart attack, which was slightly different because at this time they had already had three kids. They had, you know, lives, they didn't really depend financially on anything. So neither John and or Henry, who died, gave any life insurance aid to any of their families. In fact, Anna with John, she lived the remainder of her life on social security alone. So Jean and Bob, they say, you know, we want to, we want to learn from the mistakes of our dads. We want to get life insurance policies for ourselves and our three kids to make sure that we, you know, in case anything unfortunate were to happen, God forbid, we would be okay. Unfortunately, they didn't know that they would have to use one of those life insurance policies when their eldest son Mark died in a car crash at the age of twenty one years old. Twenty one years old. He, though luckily, had a life insurance policy. Using his life insurance policy, they were able to use that to study abroad in Spain for Karen. My dad, Kevin, was able to backpack through Europe. Jean was able to take off some work to get some time. And then actually Kevin invested a small portion of his life insurance money into a Roth IRA, which is still growing to this day. So Mark's seed money is still currently growing. So the impact of Mark's death is still growing, even though, you know, he's gone. So that's kind of an impact of what life insurance can have after your death. So now that I told that story, I wanted you guys to kind of picture your own family, your family portraits, what's hanging above your fireplace at your house. And then I want you to think of what that family portrait would look like if fifty percent of that income for your household were to disappear.
So we thought long and hard about how to fix this and how we can get information to people in an easy to understand way so that they can make the right decision for themselves and for their families specifically. And so ultimately, what we came to was the realization that there is a serious gap in the market here, particularly in information for true third party information. The majority of what you can find is tied to existing insurance companies. And obviously, they have a financial interest in you choosing them for their insurance. And so we wanted to find a way to not only inform people in an easy way, but in a truly objective way. So what we created is called Secure Path. And the, it starts with the flyer that you see off to the right there. And it condenses a lot of the information we've talked about here, some of the basic statistics down into a pretty easy to understand format. And that is set to be worked into the district's open enrollment program, starting on October twenty seventh. Staff members throughout that program will be presented with that. And that leads to our website, securepathls.org, which has much more in depth information about types of life insurance expenditures, and also a basic calculator that users can employ, putting in basic financial information. And it will give them a number for about what they should be looking at for life insurance and what types may be best for them. And so it all kind of comes together to create a very easy to understand and very useful program that makes it so that staff throughout this period of open enrollment can make a an educated decision for themselves and for their families so that they can feel that level of security. And so as as a whole, we think that this can really offer something that is, does doesn't exist right now. It's something that is truly going to be unique to our district, we feel. And we we look forward to seeing how this helps our staff. Do you have any questions?
Going to go into insurance sales or what's going on here? It's fantastic.
Oh, I, my dad, that's all my dad's thing. I'm good. He's in insurance. Yeah, elementary teacher. Hopefully at Lindbergh, we'll see.
You're hired.
I do plan to let Sun Life know that this is out there. Their increase in life insurance is is great that it's due to these guys because they're great. I thought this was an awesome presentation, so they did a great job. And Joey included his video in the website, too, because we thought that was pretty compelling. So.
The, yeah, I don't know. Did you mention it?
I did not, no. So we, on the website, we also condensed kind of this whole presentation into a shorter video that is available on the website. It shows up on the landing page, the homepage, and then is also available elsewhere and that can be shared. And I believe we're considering also including that in the open enrollment program as well.
And I just want to emphasize that I am remarkably proud of these two. They are both seniors now and this is a project that they did last year. So the fact that they have put so much work in continuing this really important work is, makes me very proud.
Did you guys design the calculator? I couldn't remember. Or is that, yeah?
Yes, I put that together using information that took quite a while to dig for. And it's built in Google Sheets or Excel, whichever is preferable for individual use.
I don't know if it's the right word, patent trademark that, have you? No, I'm serious. I mean.
Potentially, yeah.
So we need to, yeah, we need to work on that with you guys, so.
I know. Along with it, there are definitions also of the different types of life insurance that you can buy, which are really great definitions.
Actually, just to, oh, sorry.
No, I just said excellent. It's great. Oh, my thing's on.
I just wanted to really quickly mention, too, and I know kind of Cole kind of went into that, but you can kind of see in the picture, some examples of what she was talking, Monica was talking about, about different things in there that will help you understand kind of what each policy could be for you, the different types, and really like, you know, get a better understanding of that. And the website has a lot of resources like that. There's actually like a question page where you can look at it and the, you know, like if you have certain questions about certain things, you can click on it and it'll give you an answer. Cole did a really good job with that. So, yeah, I don't know if you guys want to like search through that at some point, but just so you know.
One thing, and if you if you would like to go to the website, there the, we've had a real fun time with getting our like official URL up and running, but there is a temporary sites page right now linked to those images that you can go to while, over the next couple of days, we work to get the the official website up and running because there was a massive company merger that made our life very difficult.
I have just a logistics question, I guess. So the class is English three and it's going to show up on a transcript as, you know, this is the class you took. How do you convey everything you did here to like a college admissions, you know, application? How does, how do they understand that this wasn't just an English class? You actually did something.
That's actually really funny you mentioned that because I literally talked to my mom about that before we left. I was like, so like, this is so cool. How do I put this in a resume or something like that? So or at least, I don't know if Ms. Schweitzer has something different to say, but what I kind of thought was logistically, I was going to put something along the lines of like, you know, have public speaking, something like that. And like, and then put in maybe like a bullet point under that, spoke to the central office of school, something like that. But I don't know if there's a better way to word that or not for some sort of job interview or college.
We can, we can help you with that. So and again, I think that question highlights, you know, we've been talking about evidence based learning and this opportunity would not be there if we continued to do English the same way for every single student. And I think this really highlights the value of where we want to be in personalized learning because this is a, this is a, there's not a better example of this. And and when our kids leave the diploma plus, this is a plus right here. This is a service project for their district that they can talk about. You know, they're going to, you're going to be asked to describe how you've lived outside of the classroom when you apply to colleges. I can't think of a better story to be able to tell than what you guys just did right here. So yes, do that. And if you need help with that, you, we got lots of people that can help you with that. So.
I would just like to echo what I think a lot of people on the board have said. I mean, this was amazing, guys. I remember we all had, I think, freshman English together and like, the change and dynamic is just amazing. So I'm super proud of you both. And kudos to you, Ms. Schweitzer, as an educator. Like, I think going for these real world learning experiences are something that we've been trying to do with different programs, like our ag tech program we're developing and all that kind of stuff. So just props to you all. This was amazing.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's exciting to add more seats at the table, more fun tonight with staff and students and parents tonight from from our end. This evening, I am going to talk about our goal with extra duty, extra pay, focusing our conversation tonight on what it's looked like at the elementary level. So last school year, this was a research goal of ours because our extra duty, extra pay process was centralized here at the central office and approvals all went through a team at the central office level. And we decided as several groups that we wanted to decentralize it and make it more of a building process. But with that, we also grew into looking at compensation for elementary building clubs and activities. That was not present in years past. So with support of Joelle in the business office and working with our committee, support from all of you and the Board of Education, now we have funding for that. And this school year, I am proud to look at what we've implemented. So through meetings at all the elementary buildings, proposal forms were sent out to teachers at the beginning of the school year. And I think it was the first of September. And as of right now, at all of our elementary buildings, we have eighteen clubs that have submitted proposals for compensation for this school year. Couple of those clubs have been existing clubs in the past, but staff were not compensated for that. So that's one of the things that we're again extremely proud of. But then also proud that now more clubs are being brought to the forefront and more ideas and fun for the students. Because what this really boils down to is getting our kids involved at the elementary level after school. We promoted at the middle school and at the high school, but now we're really able to promote that involvement outside of the classroom, outside school hours with their staff and the building community among each other. And then when it bleeds over into the middle school, then they want to be involved in more clubs and activities because they're used to it as a practice. So this evening, I am going to quit talking because I have administration from Crestwood here. So Mr. Norton and Ms. Holmes will present. And then we have Beth Bridwell, classroom teacher. And then two, we have a parent and a student, Jacqueline Jessick and Crosby. So they're going to talk about their experience with clubs. So I'll hand it over to you guys.
All right. Well, good evening again. Thank you all. Thank you, Jamie, for that. So in a minute, you're going to hear from our our club leaders and representatives from Environmental Club and our garden program. And in terms, those are in terms of student experiences outside of the school day. But I just also want to point out that from these programs outside the school day, it's led to some really positive schoolwide changes for us at the school, Crestwood, including some adjustments to our our board policy. A few years ago, we had Crestwood students from the Environmental Club present on our styrofoam trays that we were using every day. And that shift was made into washable trays and forks. And now our present is we're looking at composting. So there's some really cool stuff that's happening as a result of these outside the school day experiences. And Jill, you're going to talk a little more about the.
Yeah, so like Jamie said, we want to engage our students with our school community outside of just that school day. So first with Environmental Club, we, this involves fifteen to twenty five students in grades third, three through five, and they meet over a six month period for about two hours per month outside of their prep time.
So I'm going to reintroduce also Jacqueline Jessick and her son Crosby. We're going to talk about the Environmental Club, its past, its present, and some future goals. But also want to highlight, too, that Karen Luning, one of our reading specialists, is a part of this. She's a staff member that also serves in a leadership role with our Environmental Club.
Karen's my right hand girl, so she's not here. Karen and I have been doing this for five years. It hit me today that the first year we did this, those students are now freshmen in high school. So that's a, I feel old saying that. We we meet weekly, or we did meet. Karen's my right-hand girl, so she's not here. Karen and I have been doing this for five years. It hit me today that the first year we did this, those students are now freshmen in high school, so that's a, feel old saying that. We meet weekly, or we did meet weekly, now we meet every other week for an hour and a half. And then every other month, we either host an event or we do a hands-on activity outside school in the community with the kids. So for us, it's not a club where it's just like, go outside and pick up trash. Like, we really feel like we're extending the curriculum outside the classroom into an enrichment activity. So we always put the why with why we're doing things, like instead of you're just going to go do a creek cleanup. So we do have a creek cleanup on Sunday. We collect data from what they collect, and then it's a good time when we have a meeting, we go back to see how they get to experience watershed. So we'll pull up Google Maps, and they can see, you know, streams lead to rivers, rivers lead to the ocean. We host electronics recycling drives for the community, and we go to the why of that, of like keeping things out of the landfill, the minerals and the metals. And then we have a pumpkin smash coming up. It's also a community event where people can drop off their pumpkins after Halloween. We get aggression out, smashing them with a bat, but we start, we teach them about the composting process, so there's always a why to like what we're doing. Every year, we participate in the Green Schools Quest, which is a program, a challenge-based program put on by the USGBC, which is US Green Building Council. It is for pre-K through 12, private and public. This year, there is 60-plus schools participating. Our first year with the Styrofoam Tray Initiative, we did receive first in the elementary category because we submit paperwork and then a video of what we did. Last year, we submit, last year, we received third place for our project. So our project, every year, there's a focus. Last year was climate action. Can you go two ahead?
Two ahead?
Yeah, two ahead. Last year was climate action, and so we did like a behavioral change campaign, starting with the community. We hosted a no-waste kitchen class where students from Crestwood could sign up with their parent, and we brought in someone from the town hall garden who taught the reasoning for keeping food out of the landfill with methane gas, how to store things properly in the refrigerator so they didn't spoil as quickly to save them money as well. And then we had a chef come in. So Crosby is going to tell you what he learned from the chef part.
What I learned from the chef part was not to waste food. Like, if you have leftover food in your refrigerator, you should use it to create other food. And what we made out of leftover food was grilled cheese, soup, salsa, butter, and that's it, I think.
The students also did a reduce and reuse as part of the Climate Action Plan where they made beads from old magazines and put those onto bracelets, and they learned how to make paper from old paper, and they sold the bracelets and cards. And for their projects, they raised money and they donated it to.
Team Trees by Mr. Beast.
Mr. Beast is a YouTuber, if you don't know that. So you can go back to, oh, I'm sorry. We host a Planet Palooza, Planet Palooza, they sold those at Planet Palooza, and Planet Palooza is a community-wide event that we open up usually Wednesday in February. We bring in eight to 10, eight to 10 different organizations. Sorry, bad choice. Eight to 10 organizations that are sustainability-based, and then we have activities and crafts and stuff for the whole community to enjoy, so. If you can go to the, back to the other slide.
The previous.
Yeah, the previous, thank you. So that's, Mr. Doug Barton was there, and Crosby and another student rose up. They presented at the awards banquet for the Green Schools Quest what their project was, so I'll turn it over to Beth.
Hi, I'm Beth Bridwell. I am the English Language Specialist at Crestwood, but I also manage the Crestwood Garden. And so Kit asked me to talk about the past, present, and future of our garden, and it started in, the idea started in April of 2019. I had won the Teacher of the Year for the district, and I got a $500 grant, and I wanted to know what, what the school wanted to do with that money because I wanted to give it back. And at that time, my son William was finishing his fifth grade year at Crestwood, and William has high-functioning autism. And those six years of elementary school, I'd look out the window and see him just walking the recess field and never playing with kids and never playing on the equipment. It was just very overwhelming for him, and I thought, wouldn't it be great to have a space for those kids where recess is overwhelming and they can be in nature? Because let's face it, I mean, most of our kids, it's nature deficit disorder, that's what they call it. And so I thought a garden would be an awesome idea. So I asked the Crestwood community, our staff, and I said, you know, how do you feel about a garden? And thinking that the $500 would get us further than it did, it did not go, it did not go very far. It bought, it bought some plans. So around that time, I was introduced to Jacqueline Jessick. I mean, that same time, she was the Green Schools Mentor, had just been listed, named our Green Schools Mentor, and so we were connected. And Jacqueline's passion, I mean, this woman is phenomenal. So when, when the farmers' club is, is the thing, I mean, she's phenomenal, and she, she was such a resource. It took two years back and forth with the district on where we should put the garden, the best place. I mean, at first, they wanted us way back in the backfield, and some of our grants that we had written and won said it needed to be visible, so thankfully, the district agreed to have it right by the school. We have the beautiful pavilion that's right there, and it's just a perfect learning space for us. So April of 2021 is when Seed St. Louis came, and we had a huge workday, a build day, and they built all of our boxes for us, and it was a community event. Lots of families came, lots of kids came, and it's just, it's been awesome. So currently, we, the garden, the garden class or garden lessons are taught by Ian Fairley through Design Lab. And it's not the most ideal, and Ian would be the first to tell you that he's not a gardener. I mean, he would tell you that. And so he, you know, and he has his own curriculum. He has Design Lab that he, that he has to teach. So it, garden, the kids probably go out, classes probably go out about once a month, but we are talking about meeting together once a week and planning, and so hopefully, he, his goal is to get the classes out twice a month. But that is one thing I would love to see in the future, because for these, the, the most successful gardens, school gardens are run by a garden educator, so someone who is there full-time, and it would be ideal to have that as the fifth special, art, music, PE, Design Lab, and garden. And that's really where I would love to see this go, at every elementary, every middle school, and then we can work in collaboration with the, the farmers' club. That's what I envision in the future. That's my hope. So we, we love it, though. The kids love it. I was just outside yesterday, I, after school, I was weeding, and I mean, when I walk out, it's like Flyers Club is out there, and so kids just ran to me, and how can I help you? How can I help you? And I said, hey, look at this compost pile with all the weeds inside it. Why don't you dig these out? And I mean, every kid was like digging and getting those weeds out for me, so they, they love it, and it's, it's been a really great addition to our school.
Yeah, I was just going to add too, this is, I mean, the garden takes 12 months of coordination with volunteers on Saturdays. I mean, we were doing mulching and moving things around all summer, you know, and also watering too. You had a, we had a dry spell this summer too, so making sure everything's nurtured. So it's, it's not just during the school year that this kind of program takes an impact for our community. It really is a year-round program.
And thankfully, we have parents who are so supportive. I, I send a sign of genius at the end of May and ask who can help water every week, and parents will take a whole week and take care of the garden for us. So I just go up, you know, sprattically in the summertime now because I know it's taken care of by parents, but I'm up there doing other things, fixing things, whatever.
And we're just grateful to the board and to Dr. Cabato for making that step towards, you know, recognizing the work that's done for our clubs and our programs like this, so thank you.
Questions?
So coincidentally, I actually went to my Crestwood Student Advisory, which Crosby is a member of, and I'll just reiterate, they said the same exact things that all of you said. I mean, they talked a lot about Crestwood Community, which they just kept mentioning over and over again, and it all kind of boiled down to the fact that you guys are just so open with clubs and also creating new clubs, and I think that incentivizing it not only for students but also teachers now is a great way to kind of boost that.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And as a parent in the Crestwood community, I can just speak to what I've heard from my student and her experience, and just how special the garden is, and how it really does, like, whenever she gets to go out, that's the first thing she talks about when she comes home. We got to go to the garden today, and we saw this, and we talked about this, and just the, like, the way that her learning has expanded because of that, and, you know, she talks about how they get dirty, you know, like, it's just, it's such a fun thing for a kid to have at school, where, you know, you get to be outside and you get to experience those things. And so I, I love seeing it every time I go to campus. It's beautiful, and just thank you so much for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to update you on our compass goals for communications. So if we can go into the next slide, the main thing I'm going to talk to you about today is just the update on the strategic plan process, and so you all participated in that. But as you know, in September, we had EGL here doing quite a bit of community engagement. So to summarize, they hosted over 120 hours of in-person meetings to collect feedback from our community. There were four public community engagement events, and then small group staff meetings at all of our schools and central office and the Support Service Center. So just really giving everyone an opportunity to speak with them and share their thoughts. And then the Steering Committee also met for the first time in September. So this month, in October, what we're really focusing on is the online survey, which is linked here. I just checked while we were meeting right now, and we have over 1,300 responses already on our strategic planning survey. I would say about half of those responses right now are parents. We've got quite a few staff, but we're really working on getting it out to the community as well. So our link newsletter that mails out to every house in the district should be out within the next week or so here, and that includes a link to the survey, and then we will share it with the Community Breakfast, which has about 300 people who are planning to attend on October 27th. We'll share the link there as well. After October wraps up, we're going to close the survey, and we'll be sharing that data with EGL so that we can use it with the Steering Committee in November. So if you go to the next slide, this just quickly lists the questions that are involved on the online survey, so if you have not had a chance to take a look at it, it really covers the strengths, opportunities for improvement. And these are all questions that are open-ended answers for people, so we're going to be collecting all that feedback and just looking for the trends and the themes that are coming out of it that will drive the direction for the plan. So things about what are the positive learning environment, how are we, how are we achieving that? Are there experiences that you would like to see students have that are not currently offered? How do we solicit student input? And then what would you like to see included in the five-year strategic plan? So as we've discussed previously, and as EGL has kind of shared from their visits, we're really looking to continue the work of the past five years with this plan, but definitely want to hear from all of the members of our community on their thoughts on that as we move forward. Okay, so now if we go to the next slide.
Can I just jump in there real quick?
Sure.
So continuing the plan is based on preliminary feedback that EGL has gotten. So it's, you know, we want that feedback so we can tweak it, but overwhelmingly, while they've spent time in the district, it was overwhelmingly, yeah, there's some things we need to tweak and do maybe a little different, but that message from who they were getting the information from was that we just need to get, extend this plan.
And that included our staff, our parent leaders, our administration, and then those community engagement meetings as well, that they were getting that feedback from. So the Steering Committee will meet again on November 1st. They'll review really the summary of that data from those community engagement sessions, the online survey. We're sharing data from the Listening and Learning Survey, which I, has about, I'm trying to remember how many responses I told, last, 350 maybe? So we've got quite a few responses to those questions. And then we'll meet again in January to draft the strategic plan and present a draft to the Board of Education in February. After you all review the draft, we'll have an opportunity for the community to continue to give us feedback and then present the final plan for you in March. So any questions on strategic planning? All right, we'll move on to the next slide. So the other two things are really starting to both work on and look ahead to. One is Dr. Sparks spoke quite a bit about the Success Ready Students Network and shared some really good information about that. So we are, I'm working with Dr. Lawson and the Communications Department, and then also collaborating with other system design zone districts to develop what this dashboard will look like. So all of the system design zone districts are required as part of our waiver to create a dashboard on our website where we're presenting data and showing evidence of student success. So as Tara was talking, I was taking some notes about making sure that we have that NWEA assessment data on there that's primary, then also evidence of our diploma plus programs and quantifying that for the community, and just really sharing stories about student success as well. We just heard a few really amazing stories of student success, so we've been working on capturing those and sharing those out. I think what you can expect in November from all the districts in an effort to have a consistent start, but knowing that every district will have some personal elements as well, we'll see that baseline assessment data. And then the nice thing about these dashboards is, like we've been talking about, they're updated multiple times per year. So every time we receive the new assessment data, then we'll be able to show those trends and the growth that we're seeing and really give our community an understanding. So we are working on that with, still with the goal of putting it on our website in November. And then looking ahead to April and planning for a no-tax rate increase bond issue, we really will begin planning for how we inform our community. I was talking about this with our department in our weekly meeting, and really, when you think about the last time that we went to the community and asked for their support was five years ago. So communication changes so quickly, and we really want to do our best to talk with counterparts in other districts and just study some successful informational campaigns and see what's changed. What did we do before that worked? What can we continue to change to reach everybody and make sure that they understand why this is important for our community? So we've talked with some other districts, and we're just starting to work backwards from April to see how we can best inform our community. And if we look to the next slide, so these are just some three quick snapshots of some other goals that we've been working on, and then I put Adam's group in here too to give that a shout out because I think that's important work as well. So I will start there. It's been really my pleasure to be able to assist Adam, along with Dr. Sparks, on his Student Representative Board Advisory Group, and then go along to those meetings each month. We've had two in-person meetings so far, as you know, at Sperring and at Crestwood, and just watching Adam engage with the kids and make his, his desire to get more student voice represented at the table here into a reality, that's been really fun to see. I think you've gotten some great feedback from the kids and even built some relationships and gotten to know our kids at every level. So that's been really fun to just get started and see how that goes throughout the school year. And then on the left, you'll see high school ribbon cutting and open house. So we just had our first meeting to plan this with Dr. Cochran and also the Limbrook High School Parent Group President to just really make sure we're collaborating with the high school and with our parent groups to plan this event. We're going to do our ribbon cutting on Saturday, February 24th at 9:30, so we'll be communicating that out. And then we'll follow up the ribbon cutting ceremony with tours throughout the day. So we're going to open it up to the entire community. Our vision here is really to put student learning on display and have people come in through self-guided tours, but have clubs and academic programs sign up to do demonstrations. So my hope is that we will see a music performance, and we'll see a drone demonstration, that we can have the coffee shop operational, you know, that people can just walk through the high school and experience what it's like, and talk to kids, talk to teachers who are using the space, because my experience really has been, and I think all of you have been on tours with students would agree, it's so much more valuable when you're walking through and you're hearing from a student and understanding how the spaces are being used. And so we're really excited about that. I think it's going to be a fun day to really show off the space and also just make sure that we're including the student groups and the parent groups, and so going to continue working on that. And so going to continue working on that. And then we've continued to work on our senior citizen outreach. So I've spoken about this before. Our group is really shrinking as it's growing older in age. So we are planning to roll out our new program, which we're calling Limburg Lifelong Learners in second semester, but really to take our senior associates' breakfast and put it in with other opportunities. So whether that's free admission to our athletic events or monthly or more communication via Facebook group, via email, setting up dedicated communication for people in our community who are 60-plus. We've actually reached out to get some data from our newsletter vendor for individuals in our community who are 60-plus so that we can do a mass mailing and we can really be intentional about reaching those people. Spencer and Bailey in my department went and visited Melville's 60-plus event to get some ideas on how they do that. They have a really neat event where students actually cater the meal and and serve it to the seniors. And so just taking some notes from districts that are successful and trying to tweak our programming so that it can be more impactful. We've had some meetings with City of Crestwood, City of Sunset Hills to talk about how we can help cross-promote each other and our programs. And just I just learned today that the Southwest Chamber is looking to do some initiatives to reach out to senior citizens as well. So we're hoping that us and Melville and some of these other entities can partner with them too and just all work together to reach those people. These are their schools to keep them informed and keep them connected. Any questions?
I have clarifications on the dashboards for the Success Ready Network. Is every school using the same dashboard? Is that what you said?
Not exactly. We want to have some common elements on the dashboard as far as assessment data and sharing success, but we really are all working independently on building those at this time.
So let me clarify. So basically, whatever your districts, what they use the term is through assessment. So iReady. So we're also familiar with iReady. We use that. Some districts, that's all they use is iReady. Well, when they give that three times a year, their iReady results will be on there. So there's some non-negotiables. Your academic, whatever your assessment is that is going to be reported as your accountability assessment goes on there. And so there's there's NWA is predominantly the one that's on there, iReady, and then is it STAR?
STAR and then also evaluate.
Yeah. And then real-world learning. So we have a drone aviation program. So on our dashboard, when we talk about real-world learning, we're going to highlight drone aviation where somebody else may have a CNA program. So there's those big non-negotiables of market value assets and things like that. But it's your, again, as we talk about personalized learning, it's personalized to your district. What is your local community value and what is the work that you're doing in these big buckets? So that's the way the dashboards will be designed. At least, did I, you guys got an update today? That's was the last conversation I was in.
No, you're absolutely right. I think that right now, there's a lot of development that's happening behind the scenes in terms of identifying as you work with these different testing vendors, how are we visualizing their data? Because the iReady data comes in looking differently than the NWEA data does. So most of today was spent having conversations with the NWEA group of of districts about what does that look like? And I will tell you, we still don't have a full answer for that, or at least we didn't as I left to come here. So while I think we can be really hopeful that this is ready to go in November, that's a deadline we've created for ourselves. So the public-facing dashboard, I mean, we've got a lot of work to do in a very short period of time and a lot of people who need to come to consensus. So there's there's still a lot of work to do.
I think it's such an important piece, though. I think I think it has the opportunity to give the community more information than they've ever had about how well the district is doing and not just in academics, but in everything else, too. It can highlight it as a whole picture of the pie instead of just this one little piece that is the only thing they've they've really had access to before.
And that's why I like that there there is flexibility. So we're all going to have that common assessment data, but we can really highlight what sets us apart and what we're proud of.
And I have a suggestion for, you can just use the drone program to fly over the roof at Truman if you really need people to understand why we need that prop.
Okay, on to me. The finance and operations piece, which is never as exciting as all of this other stuff. But it is a part part of our district as far as operations and keeping everything efficient. Next slide. So really what I'm going to do tonight is just update you on some of our compass goals and talk about a future one that we're working on to present with some budget for next school year. But an exciting one today that we're officially announcing that we're going to put the auditorium out for rental starting January 2024. Actually, after this meeting, since this is the official announcement, we will update the website tomorrow with the details on pricing and how everything works or how they can secure that. In our facility, our facility use is under all, under community facility use is where you find all of the information about facility use. And auditorium will have a special time period separate from use in the buildings. We tried to fit it in just to the normal facility use and it's so unique that we decided to make it its own. We did do a lot of benchmarking, but I can't say that there's a lot of auditorium space or theaters in our area that compare to what we now have at Limburg. It's a very special, unique place and it's well sought after, I can tell you that. If you want to look at comparables, you know, you look at Fox, everybody always brings up Rickman, but ours is still different than that. So it's really not comparable. With our auditorium space, there will be a three-hour minimum and we have a per-hour rental for the auditorium, but we decided to do an all-inclusive instead of at the Rickman Auditorium for Fox, they they have, it's à la carte and everything is separate. If you want lights, it's $10. If it's this, it's that. And so talking with our auditorium manager, who I want to give props to, she investigated things with her larger companies like Muni and things like that where she worked at, and the inclusive was a better way to go. So there'll be an auditorium rate for the facility and then there will be personnel charges, which is common with all of our facility use. Auditorium, it's even more specialized because you'll have to have a technician, a house manager, and then custodial. But as I said, tomorrow, we'll have all that information up on the website. The window will officially open on November 1st, this go-around. So if anyone is interested, they have to get online with our community programs, facility use and become a requestor. And November 1, they'll be able to see the dates available through August. So what the normal schedule is going to be for the auditorium will be each July, the window will open and that window will go for a whole year. So what we found out with our normal facility use timelines, it's a three-month process over the course of the school year. But with the auditorium, we figured there's going to be a lot of summer use and groups like to book well in advance. We took this to our finance committee on Thursday and we already had some ideas for improvement. So I'm sure this first posting and these first ideas will come with a lot of tweaks to improve this process, but it's something new for the district. And our auditorium manager has done an awesome job. She is Lorraine Fiori is her name. And we just completed the first musical in the new auditorium. She came into the district right when we opened the auditorium the first week for the all-staff and there are still a lot of things to get completed on punch list. I just received a four-page note from her today on still things to do. She's very well organized, a good communicator, and she's getting along well with our our drama teams and our band groups. So it's a very exciting thing that we're getting ready to roll out. Secondly, not so exciting, we have been moving forward with our HVAC audit and repair and placement master plan. This was an implement and I've been including a lot of this to the board in Friday packets. And if you look at our finance pages, you'll see that we've been making improvements at buildings that we've been having trouble with years and years and years. Buildings that have already have been addressed have been Concord, ECE, Dressel. Truman has a small modification that you'll see that is in this board packet for board approval that can't wait till our prop. It's an area in our band room that we need to update to keep them comfortable until we get our new facility. Unfortunately, this isn't a very fun topic, but I think that our personnel, teachers and everybody are feeling much relief that things are being addressed that may have not been addressed for years due to this audit. So the boards, thanks for their time and effort in this compass goal. The next slide, another one that's not as fun to talk about, but our staffing post-construction, which we're almost post-construction with the parking lot will be 100% completed. But house staff, we did hire all the additional staff at the high school post-construction. The positions that we hired, we didn't share this information with a lot of people because it's unique. With the weekend workers for the high school, we hired three 12-hour staff positions just for the high school. So they worked Friday 12 hours, Saturday 12 hours, and Sunday 12 hours, 36-hour week, similar to factory work. And we had a lot of applications for that position. There, that's the new trend out now there in working is people like to work three days, be off four. And so those positions are filled. It also gave some consistency to that building on the weekend when it's at its busiest. I mean, everybody knows the high school campus on the weekends is extremely busy. So you will see the same staff there on the weekends. In the past, we filled that with, you know, subs or custodians that wanted to work from other positions in the district. So that has been a great success. Again, we're trying to keep that a little quiet because we're, I think, the first in in the state to do something like that. So I have to give Scott and his team, it was Ray, our, you know, lead custodial manager that came up with that idea and it's it worked really well. We also have had success with student workers and I know there's they're working on a story. Are you working on that story about the student workers?
The High School Journal.
The High School Journal, yeah, yeah. There's an article going to be coming out about that with just after school, you know, the shortage, labor shortage with custodians and things like that. We've posted jobs in student workers who stay after school to do simple tasks like empty trash cans out of classrooms have helped immensely with filling the void with the labor shortages for support staff. And the ones that we have hired, I think we have eight or nine right now, they actually love the job. So it's, you know, maybe not the same as the realistic, you know, it's on-hand skilled things that kids are doing, but it's worked great. They get along with their leaders in those buildings and we'll continue to do that moving forward.
Joel, I had a quick question.
Yeah.
So did we hire one of those students as a full-time evening custodian?
Um, I'm not sure.
Or is that one of the student helpers that I saw the other day?
It might be. I'll see all the sites that they're at.
Yeah.
They're throughout the district. We did have one that was really kind of an early, one of our first ones that really showed interest and actually came to work. I think he went to Dressel, but then I think he did apply for a full-time job after that. So I should bring my student workers to talk about their cleaning at the height, at the buildings, but it's it's worked out great. We are still contracting staff, unfortunately, in the support area for custodians. And we're going to have a compass goal on that for next year. So we'll bring that forward. There still is labor shortages and Jamie and her team with HR staff have another project that we are going to bring to you hopefully that will help fill the void that is a unique service as well. So lots going on in that area. The next one on transportation logistics and trends, we all know where at with that. Again, labor shortages with bus drivers. We thank the board. We've done some things that provide perks to our contracted staff at both at First Student and SFE staff that some of our, like being able to enroll in the Early Childhood Center or school-age childcare, those options that may have not been open before to vendor staff. We have opened that to our SFE and our First Student Workers and we have seen positive results from that as well. We've had additional applications. So good things in that area. Again, we're not fully staffed, but we're seeing more applicants. In the food, in the transportation world, it takes at least two to three weeks for training. So that turnaround time to get an applicant is a little bit longer, but we have about, I think, 10 applicants on file right now. So that's good news. Next slide. So we all know the bond issue, April 2024. Everybody is working on that. We have, everybody have seen a lot of that through Dr. Lake's Listening and Learning Tours. We first presented it to our facilities advisory committee that met this month. It was the first meeting for that advisory group and lots of questions, lots of excitement around that. They're ready to get out there in front of the community and talk about the projects. How can they see the projects? Where can we share a list with our neighbors? So I know there's next steps on that. We will be coming to the board in December with asking you for a resolution on that. We are working with our bond council right now, who is drafting bond language. Beth has shared our previous bond language back to years and years ago, and we're putting something together that is all-encompassing that we can take to our voters so that they can understand what is on the issue and that will give us something to take to the voters in April. So you should see that coming in the next month. Another item that you'll see in this board packet is our district energy management. We have been sharing information about, this is the three-year program. In December, we were at, really, it's a six-year program, I would say. We're three years after full implementation of our equipment. And Mike was on this committee when we hired our ESCO company Navitas back early in 2018, I think is when we started that process. What was unique about Navitas and the energy management with that team was they provided three years after the equipment was installed and signed off as completed, they had a energy manager in their contract. So no fees. That energy manager has been out in all of our buildings. I've shared things with you guys in Friday packets. And as of December, our estimate, because we still have November, December to get final numbers, but it looks like that we're going to exceed their their estimates on what our savings would be for that project. And the good thing is that savings right now is making the payments for the $11 million equipment that we put in place. But those payments, when those payments are paid off, that savings is the district district's money and then we can use that in operations. Over this course of five or six years when we've been in this program, energy rates continue to rise. So we have maintained our level of energy spend with the energy manager on staff. What he did not address this go-around was the high school, because the high school was not included in that project because it was its own project. So we're getting ready to start with Navitas on the high school to learn the procedures around energy management, which things are like as simple as operating your, your, what do you call it, your, your dial or whatever you call it, on your temperature in your room and how to override and things like that. It's really simple things like that save us energy. Thermostat, couldn't think of the word, dang it. Thermostat. He just made a roadshow with Shelley out to all the buildings and reminding everybody how to do that, talking to new teachers, having a third person do that, an independent company come. And I think our staff feels they can talk to him better than they can if Scott goes out or I go out and we talk about energy management and your thermostat. Roe is very approachable and our staff know him as soon as he comes in the building. So the high school, we'll be coming on board with that as soon as January, I think, is when we will finalize our commissioning on the HVAC systems at the high school. And we're expecting a very large rebate check just from the equipment and the energy savings that we've put in play with that project. Childcare, school-age staffing is another item that we were researching and this is the one that we're going to expand upon in our compass goals for next school year. I will have to say right now, our waitlist for school-age childcare is down. It's under 50, which we started the school year, you know, almost close to 200. That program is very popular. A way that we have been able to get staffing on that is also with students. We are marketing our programs to students and there are students that like that schedule because they work not before school, because there's not enough time with the high schoolers in the before program, but after school and they don't have any weekends or any nights. They get to leave by 6:30 PM. It is a split shift and it is a little bit hard for our Flyers Club staff to manage students just because our kids are so busy, as you can see. So scheduling, one may work an hour, another may work two hours. So you have to funnel together a lot of staff to fill one position, but that is working as well. Next slide. And that's it?
Any questions from anyone?
Any questions from anyone? Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop 1585?
So moved.
Motioned by Matt.
Second.
Second by Andrew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Board Workshop 1585 is adjourned.